Let's start the meeting, call the order. Uh, is there any agenda additions or deletions? Alright, don't hear any. Approval of the minutes, uh, from March 12th?
So moved.
Is it a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I wasn't here, so. I wasn't here.
Oh, I wasn't here, so I can't second.
You're gonna have to second it.
Were you here, Eric?
Nope.
I wasn't either.
Alright, I'll second it.
There you go.
We're out plowing it.
You can't.
Yep.
So you can't approve them? You don't have a quorum. You don't have a quorum to that was here for the minute, our meeting, but...
Oh.
I wonder if we can...
What table up next meeting?
Yeah, I guess we could do that. I'm gonna make a motion to stay with till next meeting.
What, you mean the minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, why not?
Alright, and I'll second it. Call out in favor, table one, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, alright. Highway road commissioner report.
Um... Right after Gitgold, the western side got fixed and is being picked up tomorrow. Transmission problems with wiring. Uh, short now. Hopefully they got it all fixed. And then they did a few other things and when it left here that day, there's another hole in the fourth, third tank, air tank. So, I had them put a new tank on, it's still in warranty, so that's fully covered. But, I think, you know, we gotta pay the labor on it. Fuel straps were rotted. So we had to put new fuel straps on it, um...
Wait a minute, how old is it?
That's... Twenty nineteen truck. And then the power steering lines need to replace, they're all rusted and ready to go. So what I did is I had them... I told Rob up there, I says do a complete physical on the truck, let me know what's what. Long as it's there in the shop. And that's what they come up with.
Do those straps have that much of a problem on all the trucks, or?
Nope. Well, we got the old Mack, you know, uh, never been changed or anything. I say that, tomorrow morning I get down and fuel tanks will be on the ground, but...
Got it, bro.
Yep. String it up, piece of balance line. Um... As you know, the storm we just had was quite intensive and we got through it best we could. Again, kudos to my crew, the... They did, stuck right with it, we didn't even take breaks or nothing. And, uh, anytime we ate, ate on the run. The other thing we have is approval for the highway grant for the paving. Um, Tom Fuller did an estimate for us, so we can apply for that grant for paving. And that is for Creek Road. From Lester Hawkins driveway, there's a break in the road to Billings and Sugar House, a straight shot through. That road hasn't been done since Norm was here and I'm gonna thank probably...
Twenty eleven ago.
Two thousand six, maybe?
Yeah.
Two eleven? Two eleven.
Wow.
Yes.
Okay, true.
How long is that? The section that you're gonna do?
The... I got footage right here. The first phase from Hawkins to Alfrisha Road is nine tenths of a mile. And, let's see, hm... Forty-four hundred and twenty-four feet.
Total?
Oh, that was that nine tenths of a mile. Because, okay... Oh, you don't have that on here the last... Oh, yes, here we go. Forty-four hundred and twenty-four feet from Hawkins to Alfrisha Road, because that section is gonna be all reclaimed, because of the road with the bellies in it. From there, Alfrisha to Billings and Sugar House is thirty-three hundred and sixty-eight feet. And twenty-two foot wide, straight through. That does not need reclaiming if we get after it now. So it'll be a one-shot process, straight through. And what it is, a lot of times, if you do a straight shot, all the equipment's there, but if you do a little quarter mile here and quarter mile there, it costs more because moving all the equipment and stuff.
Yeah. Now, we're there by Norm's house, there's this section that goes up and down during the weather.
There was a...
Anything that can be done?
Shawel culvert installed there. And it could be fixed, but the issue is, the culvert continues all the way down to his barn, past his garden.
Wow.
The only way to do that is drop the culvert down in the, at the road, put a ditch down through by his garden and stuff.
Well... Should it be done, or?
That's been a child for us, though.
So what you're recommending, and then...
Well, we're gonna...
That's Fuller?
No, this is just for the grant process on Fuller. You, we have to get a contractor, a paving contractor to apply for the grant. You need one bid and the figure's there. And then come time, if we get awarded the grant, or we actually put it out to bid to our three companies we got local.
Alright, so there's no thing that I have to sign here, it's just that one?
Just update, pretty much, it don't require signature on that?
It doesn't, it's just for approval to make sure that we can submit it.
Mm-hmm.
Agency and transportation.
Jan had a question, right?
So, the grant, where's the money coming from, is that a state?
It's state grant. And about, probably every three years, you might get a grant. Again, sometime, if you're lucky, you might get one back-to-back, but that's very seldom.
How do you plan, um, paving grants, are highly sought after from Vtrans?
Oh, I can imagine. So they just say, you're eligible this year, is that how it works?
Yeah, the last one we did was, um, down here in South Creek Road. We ended up, we put in for two grants on that. What they did is they had a little bit of money left, so they awarded us thirty-six thousand to do that project for a grant. The Walker Mountain project that got done last summer, from, uh, Bowen's Pit by the hotel, out through the one thirty-three. We put a grant, but didn't get accepted. Um, so that was on our town that we vote on every year.
So when you make the selection about what roads that you're going to pave or repair with the grant money, do, do you only look at roads that are already paved?
Yes. The reason being is, we're actually behind. We got twenty-five miles of road, twenty-five and a half a tire. So...
Those vampire.
Basically, I had to figure it out, I think we should do, be doing like three to four miles, I think it is, I had to figure it out, it's down the garage. Each year, and we're lucky to get a mile. Mile and a half. Well, that'll be about a mile and a half, roughly.
With the grant money?
Right, or we got town funds also, we vote on through the articles. I believe that's, was that Heidi, a hundred and ninety-five thousand, because that was part of the road?
Um, so, that actually got changed, it used to be voted on, but then the argument got made time and time again at town meeting that, or at the informational meeting, that it should be part of the regular budget, so now that is no longer a separate article.
That's right.
And we include it in the regular highway budget. Um, but yes, there are funds in that line item. And that is, for instance, this year, there was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for resurfacing and reconstruction. So what that, what that is, ends up being used for is on years that we don't get grants, then we'll use that money as best as we possibly can. And on the years that we do get grants, again, we, we use that as our match worth that grant, but also use that as we best possibly can. When these grants, uh, applications are also submitted to Vtrans, it's not just simply the papers that, um, the select board sees up there. Photographs get submitted as well, and then Vtrans takes a look at everybody who has submitted their photographs and, and really tries to give it based on need of, uh, with the conditions of the roads that are presented to them. So we clearly have some roads in need in this town, I think we all know that. Um, so if we're not awarded, you can only imagine what they did award to.
And grant writing can be such a pain in the neck, too.
Well, this is pretty generic.
Vtrans doesn't make it too terribly hard.
Oh, that's good.
That's nice.
They have a form that you fill out and stuff, and...
Yeah, so this is...
That's it, right there.
Yeah, this is what we're talking about.
Yep.
So, um, does Fuller Sand and Gravel understand that we're just...
Oh, yes. They all do, I mean, I could've called Pike, I could've called Will.
So, you're asking for...
Just approval, a motion to approve to send that in to get, see if we can get a grant to get.
Alright, I wanna make sure.
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I wanna add to that, what happened, Heidi, you remember, I think it's one of the states, like a hundred and seventy-five thousand under grant? I can't remember now.
That we can get awarded up to one hundred?
Up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I think.
Something like that, yeah.
And what happened, like, I don't know, this project here, we got some estimates, but... It's, it's gonna run over a hundred and seventy-five, so that's where the town funds will come in to match it, to make the project work. You understand how I explained it?
Thank you.
I wanna, uh, talk about this paving grant application.
This, that's it, right there.
This is.
Yep.
I think he just hopped. So now we need to talk about the passive grant.
That's what I'm talking about.
The passive grant, okay, go ahead.
So the passive grant, we had applied for, and we've already gone over this in other meetings. Um, the material that we had applied for was non-compliant with what it needs to be. Um, unfortunately, the signs did not meet their standards. Uh, so we had it upgraded, you know, had the quote upgraded. And it went from twenty-nine fifty-ish up to thirty-two sixty-five. Um... We can be awarded up to fifteen hundred dollars for that. We had already been approved for, like, I think fourteen seventy-five or somewhere in that vicinity, however, because the signage that we put in for was not compliant with what they needed, we need to reapply altogether.
And what was needed is now they wanted for us a signs, but they didn't tell us that, and they awarded. Reflective, yeah.
Yep.
So they're gonna let us reapply because it was actually on them that they didn't explain it that way.
But that addition, Heidi, is there any issue?
Nope, there's money in the budget for that match.
Okay.
And what this is, is a sign package for, uh, when we're out on the roads and stuff, uh, one lane ahead. Um, we purchased the, the stoplights, so it's gonna say, turn signals ahead, stuff like that, and cones and...
The barricades for...
Barricades, and stuff like that.
Alright, I entertain a motion, so moved. There's second?
Second.
And it's only myself that would have to sign this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there any other questions? Hearing on all in favor of a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Now the motion reflect that, uh, it included a signature by the chair.
Okay.
What's that?
Oh, I just wanna know if the individual who's second that is okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the amendment?
Yep, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, yes. Clayton Webster.
He's not here.
Not here. Sun's in my eyes. Uh, if he comes in, we'll jump on it. Uh, public comments, anything from the public?
Just wish that Joe or whoever plowed the quarter line road could've gone down at least once on Saturday, down to Pete's, Billy's driveway and turned around, plowing and coming back, 'cause we now have a one-lane road, because Jim plowed and Wayne and I plowed the road, Rutland down, never touched it.
Never, never did.
Did you call them at all?
I talked with them and they said that they plowed it on Sunday, I don't know when they plowed it on Sunday, but, um, I talked to him today and he said, "We did the best we could with a ten-foot plow and one ton." And I said, "Well, I know that myself and neighbor have plowed it." You know, I plowed it at five-thirty in the morning on Saturday morning, so my daughter-in-law could get to work, and then Shelly and Wayne plowed it after that. Um, but, I plowed right from my son's driveway, right to, right to the, um...
The pavement?
Down to the pavement on Campbell Road, um, at five-thirty in the morning, six o'clock in the morning.
All the way down to Campbell, Campbell Road, they didn't even plow Campbell Road then?
Nope.
They hadn't plowed any of that?
Boardman Hill Road from Campbell up, they never even plowed that either?
Nope.
So, um, but, uh, they said they, they wouldn't go up in there with a, with a truck with a wing on it, that, that the only thing they were gonna go up in there with was their, was their one ton, or their four fifty, five fifty, whatever it is, yeah. So, ten-foot plow on that.
What'd you use a plow, just pick up, or?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we put chains on it on Friday, 'cause we knew we'd never get out of the driveway.
Yeah.
So Wayne plowed it like two o'clock on Saturday afternoon, he went all the way down. I came back from Pyco yesterday at eleven, road hadn't been plowed, so I had to finish plowing out our driveway, I went down and plowed, pushed out a couple of the pullovers, so if you met somebody, 'cause right now, you know, Jim was waiting for somebody, I had to back into somebody's driveway to let them get by me.
But nobody saw them come up and plowed at all?
No, there was, you could tell if somebody come through and plowed, like, where I plowed the pullouts, there was, there should've been a berm there, there was no berm there.
So I, I don't think they really plowed it at all, so, you know, but the same way with the quarter line road, I mean, I don't think quarter line road got plowed before one, two o'clock Saturday afternoon. Um, they didn't get plowed before, I honestly say it didn't get plowed before that, 'cause I plowed my driveway twice and there was no berm in my dri, end of my driveway for a town truck gone by.
And on the Clarendon side?
Huh?
On the Clarendon side?
On the Clarendon side.
And what I found, they get plowed, what I found, you plow and within four hours later, the storm was so intense, it didn't even look like you plowed.
I know, Cash, but, I'm saying, there was no wing of snow into my driveway from a plow. There would've been a wing of snow, I know it snow, it was snowing hard and fast, but there was no wing of snow come into my driveway, 'cause I had plowed my driveway.
Wish the driver was here.
I, I had less snow in my driveway than there was on the road.
And, and Wayne didn't meet the plow, the town, Clarendon Town Truck, like, two o'clock, he was out plowing at two o'clock on Saturday.
We went, the whole town got done when we started that morning. Went to tires and then we switched all the dirts and the whole town got first thing in the morning, and then it got plowed again.
Yeah. I'm just saying, saying... The north end of the quarter line road didn't get done.
Yeah, and...
It couldn't got done, and down over Schoolhouse Hills Road, but...
And Clarendon wasn't sanding at that point, you guys were just plowing, so, go down versus knocking the snowbank, you could see where it was getting hung up on the opposite side of the road, and the snow...
What we're doing is we're dumping a little bit, dumping sand down on corners and hills. There's no sense of doing the flats.
No, I totally agree, I don't even think you needed the sand at all, I'm just saying that, you know, we now have a one-lane road until the snow melts, so...
Not on the Clarendon side, though?
No, not on the Clarendon side. I could ride my gravel bike on that right now, you know?
I don't wanna change the subject or anything, but I went into Rutland after work yesterday, after we got done, and you wanna see something? All the snowbanks in Rutland are all crappy color with the salt. You look at the snowbanks around here, they're all white. That shows you that we're able to manage, unless you're the tires.
Yeah, Rutland City, I know from a couple people, they were having a tough time getting around, just getting up hills and sliding the telephone pole or something. They didn't, they were not having a good time on Saturday, I heard that from a couple different.
They weren't having a good time here either.
Yeah, well, we, that's why we put chains on. But just saying, you know, two-foot snowstorm and, you know, I mean, Jim's got a three-quarter ton, we have a one-ton, and, you know, we can plow to a certain degree and, you know, we know it's part of the process, but, you know, once in a blue moon, if we get another two-foot snowstorm, and just, you know, get that snow, first shot down, get the snowbanks to link back, so we are down to a one-lane road with six inches of slush on it.
Alright, anything under our business? New business? Um, we have a list of, we have to appoint?
Officials.
Oh, yes, and to all the committees and all that stuff.
And, uh, the ones in green are the ones applying for the...
They're all the ones who replied back and said that they would be...
Yeah.
And there's a lot of vacancies here, too?
Yes. See recreation committee, really.
Um, community center, is Bob Bixby not interested?
So, he...
I just thought he was...
We had heard that, yeah, we had heard that he was not feeling well, so I didn't wanna reach out and bother him, but I, we thought that he might be here tonight, be able to ask him, but when I see him again, we will.
How about, did anybody get in touch with Clayton, with Forrest?
His bit, it's not, it's only the people that are highlighted. Like Clayton has until two thousand twenty-seven.
Okay.
With the dates on the side.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all the, all the officials to be appointed.
Whose names are highlighted?
Which are highlighted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
No, is there any names that we have that haven't said yes on any of this?
That I haven't heard back from?
Yeah.
Yep, Don Pratt. Um...
It's not a zoning, right?
Yeah, it's the ones that are underlined, I actually underlined the ones that I had not heard back from.
Oh, that's what these, okay, I see.
Only a couple.
There's Pratt and, uh, and...
Bob Bixby.
Yeah, Bixby.
Yep.
And Don Pratt's on the planning commission and zoning.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sutherland's apparently, not Sutherland, Sutherland.
Yeah, again, I'll ask her when I see her, too.
Okay, well, that's not too bad, I guess.
Says George Ambrose here, Sheriff's Department.
Yep.
We do have an issue with the rec department. Unless they have four members, they can't do anything. They have to have a quorum and they only have two members.
Oh.
Well, perfect opportunity to say to the town, we have openings on the rec committee, so if you're interested, please reach out to Ashley.
What, what does that consist of? I mean, just out of curiosity.
Can be perfect for it.
Well, what do you have to do?
I, I know, I heard that as a volunteer, right?
Yeah.
So moved.
Well, what, I mean, what is...
Second? Oh, let's see.
No, 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 no.
Let's take all three in that row. It's not a bad...
Make you wanna be a dog catcher.
I mean, I'm all in for recreation if that's what you're talking about, right? What, what is it involved? Give me a five-minute scenario.
The, the fields that are on, um...
By the airport?
By the airport over there.
Yeah, yeah, I know where that is.
So they, what we usually do is, uh, we have to find a mowing contractor to keep the fields mowed.
Right.
And, uh, Sarah's got a bunch of ideas that she wants to do for, uh, to get the community together and...
Sarah?
Sarah Koom.
Sarah Koom, okay. Yep.
So she's in charge of it?
No, Matt Jigabowski is the chair.
She's one of the rec committee members.
Okay.
Yeah.
Matt Jigabowski is the chair.
You have, what, three at this time?
Two.
Two.
Why, the McKenna, I thought he was on there.
I thought you were.
He's been off for a long time.
You're not on it?
I used to be, I, I, I don't wanna be on it.
Oh, that's a real sell.
I don't have time.
Yeah.
And I don't have any kids. I have no interest. I'm not motivated, to be honest.
So if I was interested, Heidi, you, you, I mean, you could, you could give me the information, Heidi, you could.
Between Ashley and I, yeah, we can...
Okay.
We can fill you all in.
All three of yous.
I already have my hands in a lot of recreation.
Well, time for bike thing over there, you're into that?
Bike, bike thing over there. Why don't you guys just come to Pine Hill Park in Rutland City?
Is that the only, uh, space that, uh, Clarendon is?
We also mow the field over that belongs to, uh, Bob Underhill.
Up in Chippin.
The Chippenhook Field.
Oh, okay.
We're in charge of mowing that and somewhat.
I think my kids play baseball there, yeah.
Maintaining it.
So, the fields are maintained, are there teams that play there?
The Little League, yeah.
Oh, there are, okay, yeah, so that's why they had to be mowed.
Yeah.
Right.
So...
And it may be outside of Little League this year, because the school actually took over, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, baseball and softball. So it went back, now that's back to our district, being a district, uh, sport, instead of having it be a Little League or a rec, like a rec thing. Um, however, so I'm not sure who's going to be using what fields altogether anymore, because I'm not sure if it's going to be, you know, if the school is going to be taking that back at schools, or if they're going to ask the towns to use those fields also.
Are you talking about both fields, or just the one down by there?
Both, yeah. Yeah. So the one over by the airport is actually used more for T-ball and like the little, the younger kiddos.
And there's also, Matt's already purchased, it's over the transfer station, goalie netting for like soccer and stuff like that.
Uh-huh.
So that, you know, that like...
That's for the backfield.
Yeah, for the backfield, for the field, second field in.
They also bought some frisbee golf holes.
Oh.
That haven't been installed yet, but we have them.
So we could set up a frisbee golf course over there?
See, Jan, you're the perfect one.
It's called disc golf, don't call it frisbee golf.
It is disc golf, right, right. I'm a, I'm a major, I love disc golf.
You're right.
Oh, I love it, oh, it's so much fun.
So there you go, see, sign her up.
There's your girl.
Sign her up.
Yeah, it sounds like you're interested.
How come you moved away?
You need four, though, you need four.
Okay, I didn't know if you want...
No, the sun coming in that window is just...
I, I think we outside of...
Break down the information for me, sorry.
I don't have the, I don't have the time.
If they bought disc golf, then that'd be great.
Oh, they did?
How many did they buy?
Well, you gotta, you gotta help here.
That is so cool. We're keeping you company.
Wouldn't you like to try it, though?
Not this year, I've, my calendar is...
See?
Hey, I'm traveling while I can.
You don't meet that often, right, Eric?
Oh, we're going on with you.
Sarah would like us to meet once a month, but... Matt's not on board for that, but I don't know.
I think if we get enough members, that we could meet.
I know that...
It could be met often, I'm not saying...
I know the perfect other person that could be on it, it's, they are, and, um, you know the house on the top of the bump road, that white house up the hill up there?
Len's?
Um...
That's Len's.
Heidi and Eric, they live up there, forget their last name.
With the horse?
It's the old, it's, it's that big white house that's up on the, if you go up the bump road.
They have like the little egg stand?
Yes, it's right up there, it's that big white house up on the hill there.
Up across the street.
Ryan Johnson's place.
Right, no, no, no.
Right at the top of bump road, like to the left, it's like, right up the hill, right there.
Well, they, they're a young couple, and another, and their mom lives with them, and they have a, a preschooler.
Yeah.
And he would be perfect for that. And he's, they, I know they would like to get involved in the community more.
Do you like to talk to them?
I will talk to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Awesome. Yeah, because they're, they're, they're a new young family in the community.
You can pick them up on the way to meeting.
But they're really, you know, they're, they're the type of people that would want to do something, yeah.
And then the backup for next year. Thank you.
Possibly. I'll put a possibly out.
I'll put a possibly on.
Bring a Marine Corps flag with you, too.
I don't hear, I don't hear much from Mr. Baker back there, he might be interested. You don't wanna get me involved in ball facing. It's a dog job. Way too much money's made on football and stuff like that, all over twenty-five cents, trying to get the damn quarterback.
We're gonna start a disc golf course, it'll be so much fun.
There you go.
They have one in Pittsburgh, up at their rec department, it, it's all, it's great. It's all up through the woods, it's really fun.
Matt, Matt is looking for somebody who would know where to put these, so-
Be proactive, too.
If you, if you drop that at those calls, and you let us know that you-
Yeah, 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 I will let you know. Matt is the other person you're talking about.
Jigabowski.
Okay.
Kevin wanted to volunteer, but he's not busy.
I've got a couple people that I know that play a lot of disc golf, that, uh, if you wanna find, figure out where to put those things.
Okay.
So.
The hardest part would just be putting them in.
Yeah, it's like, I was trying to do this, I put my sunglasses on, but it's, everybody's just so-
You need it, man.
Be honest with you, I know he knows what it is.
I'm gonna meet him.
Is that a field?
Yeah. Who's this?
Yeah.
Uh, Norm, call me in about twenty minutes. All right. Bye. He doesn't sound like him.
That's who called me.
Hmm?
That's who just called me.
Yeah. All right, so, there's a good discussion on that. Um, you'll let us know?
Yes.
Okay. Now, on this appointed officials discussion, um, we got a discussion on it, and- What, she made a motion?
I need second? No, he made a motion, I second, I made a motion.
Okay. And all of in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, Ashley, you're gonna give everybody a call, let them know that they've been reappointed?
It was just, um, if they were being reappointed, then if they appro, they had already said yes to it, so.
Okay.
Yep, they knew it was happening tonight.
Just to let them know that we-
Yeah.
Accomplished that mission. All right. Heidi, do you have anything you wanna report?
No, sir.
Come in.
Good.
Yes, sir?